Oh, okay. Can we get their attention? Okay. The April 24th, 2018 special meeting of the Board of Supervisors is called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Bomke.
Here.
Mr. Cavalier.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
Here.
Mrs. Mauer.
Here.
Ms. Shelton.
Here.
Mr. Snellings. Madam Chairman, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you. There are no additions and deletions. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
All right, cast your votes. Tally the votes. Okay, motion carries six to zero with one absent. Okay, and with that, Mr. Cavalier, if you could please lead us into closed session.
Thank you. Whereas the Board desires to hold a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members regarding a specific legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel and pertaining to probable and actual litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the Board, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7 and A8, such discussion may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Stafford Board of Supervisors on this 24th day of April 2018 does hereby authorize discussion of the above matter in closed meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Please cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to zero with one absent. We are now going to be in the closed session and will return to the chambers to certify before adjourning until the evening session. Thank you. All right, is there a motion to certify?
So move.
Second.
All right, cast your votes. Tally the vote. All right, motion passes seven to zero. The afternoon session is adjourned and the Board meeting will reconvene in the Board chambers at 7:00 this evening. Thank you. Let us pray. Dear God, the appreciation of your daily blessings is always refreshing. Father, I ask for your assistance and honest evaluation in all endeavors of our task at hand today. It is my wish that this group of servants truly represents the needs of our constituents of this great Stafford County. We as a Board shall use each other's gifts and abilities for unification that is aimed to meet our Board's priorities. Father, we seek your wisdom and guidance as this Board seeks the most productive ways to meet the needs of our residents. We ask for creative ways to accomplish this task at hand, and we ask now to be good, responsible stewards and favorable ambassadors going forward. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would like to comment tonight at the podium, please remain courteous and respectful to the audience and to Board members. It's important for you to keep track of your time at the podium. The Board would like to give all interested individuals a chance to speak and stay on schedule so to ensure that everyone has time to address the Board. Doesn't look like we'll have a problem with that tonight with our attendance that we see. If you wish to speak about the items scheduled for public hearing, please hold your comments until the public hearing has been opened. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the Board. Speak into the microphone slowly, clearly, and loudly. Begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light on the podium to monitor the time of your presentation. Green indicates the start of your presentation. Yellow indicates that you have one minute to summarize your comments, and red indicates that your presentation time is complete. So on tonight's agenda, we only have one item, and that is the public hearing. Finance and budget, consider tax rates for calendar year 2018. Proposed Resolution R-18-47. And also, let me back up for a minute. I got a little ahead of myself. We need to do a roll call, so I'll ask the clerk for our roll call. Well, and then we're going to be getting public comments as well. Yeah, oh, okay, I'm a little disjointed tonight, bear with me. Okay, so we're going to start with public comments, and then if you have comments that you would like to make during the public hearing, you can make those comments then. So I have four speaker cards, and the first one is Colleen Wieners.
Good evening. My name is Colleen Wieners. I'm a Stafford County resident of the Rock Hill District. I'm also an employee of Stafford County Public Schools. Tonight, I would like to begin by offering a well-deserved thank you to the Board of Supervisors for asking the school board probing questions during the budget process. These have begged to be asked for a long time. Wendy Mauer, Jack Cavalier, Tom Cohen, and Gary Snellings, thank you specifically for addressing these issues. Thank you all for asking the school board to prioritize their priorities publicly so it is clear where they truly stand on compensation. You may have noticed that there is indeed room to support salary increases with the budget Dr. Benson has presented. Do you have the authority to hold the school board accountable to fund compensation? The salary lapse seen each and every year should remain allocated to compensation instead of being reallocated at will by the superintendent to other expenditures. Without this requirement, the school board is falling short of the adopted percentage they say is being spent on compensation. The $3 million lapse this year could have gone a long way to helping staff who are well below market analysis. Additionally, a precedent has been set with bonuses and salary increases within technology that could be done elsewhere using these funds. The money is there, and it deserves to come back to all who stay and continue to make this a great school district before it simply isn't. Thank you.
Do I provide a copy to you all?
Yes, if you could provide that to our clerk. Thank you. Okay. Rob Hollister.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Good evening, Board members. I apologize, I don't have prepared remarks. My name is Rob Hollister. I live at 14 Burning Bush Court here in Stafford in Autumn Ridge. I am here simply to urge you and encourage you to support funding for the schools and whatever tax policy that you're considering tonight that will give the Stafford County School Board the maximum leverage and resources to fund our schools adequately, specifically in the short term to give our teachers a raise, if at all possible, and in the long term to plan and fund accordingly for the construction of additional schools to address the crowding issue. My wife and I have lived in Stafford since 2009. Our children started in preschool in first grade here when we moved to the area. They are in seventh and ninth grade now at HH Poole Miller School and North Stafford High School, and both of them have seen a number of beloved teachers leave the area for Prince William County, for higher pay, for other parts of the state or other parts of the country. We've had principals leave. We've had, you know, highly qualified teachers leave, and I think, as you all know, as we all know, there's no free lunch. You know, teachers devote a tremendous amount of time and personal financial resources to supplies and so forth. We've seen all over the country over the recent months, in West Virginia, in Arizona, and other states, teachers have to resort to the extreme measure of walkouts, and I don't think in any of those cases they wanted to do that, but they felt like it was urgent in their situation to avoid having to work, you know, second and third jobs and so forth to make ends meet. I don't think we face a situation like that in Stafford, and certainly we don't ever want to get close to that. We want the best talent here. I commute all the way into DC every day to work, but I think it's worth it for the quality of life that we have here in Stafford. The schools are one of the most attractive aspects, and we want to keep it that way. And the best way to do that is by adequately paying our teachers and supporting our schools. They do a tremendous job. We've been thrilled with the curriculum, and, you know, we could just ride it out with a seventh grader and a ninth grader and, you know, hope things are fine for the next few years until they're off in college, but we really want, you know, to invest in the system. If that means, you know, taxes a little bit higher for us, it's fine. It's, you know, it's a worthy cause. And so, that is all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to address the Board during general public comment period?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Christina Lewis. I am a Stafford County resident. I am also a Stafford County Public School employee, and I just want to echo the same sentiment of my coworker a few minutes ago and just show our appreciation. And I really mean that, and I almost feel like I need to say it again and again because I don't think you guys get credit. I do believe you want to fund the schools. I appreciate you digging deep into this budget. I'd be as informed this year, for sure, without watching your joint sessions, work sessions, whatever they may be, and watching you get the answers from our school board. I do think our school board has good intentions, but I don't think they've done a good enough job in making choices that reflect the priorities that they are stating to the public. So again, I just want to thank you, and I hope you keep doing that, and again, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board in general public comment? All right, so with that, I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'll just tell you that the advertised tax rate for calendar year 2018 is 99 cents per hundred of assessed value. The tax rate in the county administrator's proposed budget is .965% of 100 of assessed value. Proposed Resolution R-18-47 establishes the calendar year 2018 tax rates. The Board may adopt a rate under the advertised tax rate, but it may not exceed it without advertising and holding another public hearing. We have no presentations from our budget staff at this point in time. We've already had those presentations in the past, so at this point in time, I'm going to open the public hearing, and as with public hearings, the same applies as far as your time at the podium. I do have two speaker cards of people that wanted to address the Board during the public hearing, and the first is Jack Kimmel.
Good evening, Board. My name is Jack Kimmel, 2 Holly Lane, Stafford, Virginia. I'm the President of Hidden Lake Community Association, Inc., and I came tonight mostly for the Hidden Lake Service District Advisory decrease in rate. The Hidden Lake Community Association Board supports that resolution, and we appreciate you lowering it, neutralizing the increase in the assessment. And also, the Service District Advisory Committee, which I'm also on, also supports that resolution. On the 99 cent tax rate, my community is, has a great deal of either young couples or older retired people that are on fixed incomes. They're not real happy about, the Commissioner of Revenue stated to me that in Hidden Lake itself, we had an 8% increase in assessment. You're showing 9.7 and stuff in the paper, but he said in our community it was 8%. So, we would like to see the 99 go back more towards the 96 than the 99 because it's a major impact on them at an 8% increase in their taxes for property. But we appreciate anything that you can do, and we, the community really appreciates the Board and your support of the Service District for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Heidi Freeman. Go ahead. Yes, please.
Heidi Freeman, 109 Nina Cove. Board of Supervisors, thank you for giving me this opportunity to address you tonight. Ralph Northam was applauded at the Joint Assembly on January 15th of this year for supporting education. He stated, quote, "We should also work together now and in the years to come to make Virginia a leader in teacher pay. What's our plan? How is Stafford going to help Virginia be a leader in teacher pay?" Spotsylvania Schools is doing a 4% raise, and we're still begging for 2.5% raise here in Stafford. According to the Washington Post, January 9th, 2018 article, "America's Teachers' Shortage Can't Be Solved By Hiring More Unqualified Teachers," quote, "This past fall, school districts nationwide faced serious teacher shortages that left many schools scrambling to find qualified teachers. News alert: We are one of those many schools. To my knowledge, we started this school year off with 48 vacancies. We've heard many people present and people have sent emails. How bad does it have to get before we decide to do something? Failure to properly plan for the future will one day result in an emergency situation. Waiting until it's too late is a poor plan. Is that the kind of plan that our kids deserve?" Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the Board chambers like to address the Board during this public hearing?
May I speak again?
Yes, yes. There's one person ahead of you.
I'm Dana Brown. I wasn't planning on speaking. I live at 41 St. Williams Way. I just came from the school board work session, and I have talked to the school board until I'm blue in the face about ways that they can save money to fund raises. They refuse to do it. It's not that they don't have the money, they just refuse to do it. I sat in front of them earlier this year. I told them they could fund raises by getting rid of out-of-district students. We're spending about a million bucks a year in that. They need to tighten up the master schedule. We've got teachers teaching six kids in a class, but yet they say we're short teachers. And I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, I forgot what my third thing was, but there was another way they could fund the raises. So I would like to urge you to go on the 96 cent side as well. As far as the schools go, it's never going to be enough, and I know that we hear every year that the schools are getting their budget cut. I know full well that they're not getting their budget cut. They're always getting more money every year. It's the semantics on how they present it. They present an increase in the budget, and if you don't fund the increase, then they claim they got a budget cut. So, we're smarter than that. Please go with the 96 cent. Thank you.
Thank you. Your turn, ma'am.
Thank you.
Colleen Wieners, Six-Tory Court, Stafford, Virginia. This time, I'd really like to speak as a resident because when we purchased our home, like many of us in this room, we purchased it specifically for the school districts that we would answer to. We went to Rodney Thompson, Winding Creek, and Colonial Forge. We bought knowing that, and in time, we've been very pleased with those schools, and we've been very fortunate. Well, I would like to see the county take advantage of all those of us like me who moved here specifically for the schools, go to the 99 cents. I know I differ from others, and I realize that could place a hardship on some residents for taxes, but there are homestead tax credit programs that could then be in place for those who do have fixed incomes and need help. But this county is full of double, people who are retired and catching two salaries as contractors. That's what brings this income base up so high, and we're always ranked in the top 10 of income in the country. Take advantage of that. If we don't continue to fund these schools, we aren't going to have people like me and my neighbors who built those homes specifically because Stafford Schools was the icon around here to move to. You've got to fund them, you've got to keep them up, and we've got to stop hemorrhaging our teachers to other counties. We're losing quality staff, not just teachers, but staff all around, administrators and secretarial staff or administrative assistant staff like myself. So I would encourage you to go the 99 cent route, or somewhere in the middle, a happy medium, but I don't want to see us go down. Thank you.
Would anyone else in the chambers like to address the Board? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring this item, Proposed Resolution R-18-47, back to the Board. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chairwoman, I'm trying to find the resolution here and how I need to address it. So I move that we pass Resolution R-18-47, is that correct, with the tax rate on personal property at 99 cents? And I think I have a...
Real estate.
I'm sorry, real estate tax. Sorry about that. The other rates, as advertised, with the, is this a change?
Yeah, with the exception of Hidden.
With the exception of Hidden Lakes, to be 36.8 cents.
Correct. Okay, that's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, is there a discussion by the Board?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Mauer.
One of the reasons we changed the, I just want to clarify the Hidden Lake, going back to, that is the effective rate, and Hidden Lake is its own fund to fund the improvements for the dam and the roads there. Within Hidden Lake, it doesn't impact any of the rest of the county budget, and that budget has been put together, and our head of budget over here could, what is the word I'm looking for, can agree to that or verify that 36.8 would fund their needs perfectly.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dudenheffer.
Well, what I'd like to say is, pretty much echoing what I said about three or four weeks ago, is that kind of times have changed. I've never had so many people talk to me about raising, basically raising taxes, but I'd like to put it in the perspective that we haven't adjusted for any kind of cost of living, not cost of living, but inflation rates in many years. And this rate here, one of the gentlemen talked about 8%, that's a two-year adjustment, so that wasn't just since last year. That's a two-year assessment. We do assessments every two years. We have, even in the budget that was presented by the county administrator, there are other critical requirements in our county that need to be addressed, and there's just, there isn't the money to do that to account for all the growth that we've had in the county over a number of years. I don't think I've ever voted for a tax increase before, and keeping the tax rate at 99 is hard to even say that it's a tax increase because I've watched the budgets. We've cut, we've cut, we've cut budgets over many years and haven't accounted for that inflation rate. I agree that we need to do something with salaries, not just for the teachers, but we need to look at county employees. We need to make sure there's equity across the Board. I would like to say something that comes up all the time, we're constantly addressed about the teacher salaries. The Board of Supervisors, we do not set teacher salaries. That is strictly the school board. So we send money over based on their request. We take them at their word that they will apply it the way that they sent the budget. That hasn't always exactly been the case. So, I, there's a lot of skepticism, a lot of anxiety sometimes over the relationship and the information that we get. I wasn't here at the meeting the other night, and I apologize for that. I was out of the country, but the, it's frustrating to try and believe that you want to do the things that are right. We want to do what's right by the teachers. There isn't a conversation that we have privately or in public where we don't talk about wanting to support teachers, and not just teachers, bus drivers, the county employees, you know, all the people out there that are trying to make ends meet. It's important that we do that, and I think the citizens now are more and more now recognizing that we have other responsibilities. We have responsibilities to do the things that are important, and we can't hide behind the fact that, you know, we'll never, never do anything that raises taxes. I've been pressured in the past to sign a no-tax pledge, and I, while I've never voted for a tax increase, I've always been concerned because I felt that someday that might change. And I don't want to be a hypocrite by signing some kind of arbitrary pledge in doing this. So, there are probably some friends of mine out there that are not going to be real happy after this resolution. At this point, I think we need to do what's right for the county, and I honestly believe that this is the right way to go, so.
Okay. Ms., I'll just go down the line. Ms. Shelton.
Madam Chairman, physical responsibility doesn't mean that we go without money, and so many of the problems that we've had in the county that we're seeing now, especially the congestion, and Mr. Dudenheffer and I talk about this a lot, is we absolutely have to have money to be able to address our congestion. We believe in the equality of schools, and improving not just the equality of schools across Stafford County so that not reaching for parity, but to improve the education level is important, and so part of raising this funding level is addressing both the quality of education, which Mr. Dudenheffer, gosh, you spoke very well about, but also to address the congestion. Congestion is my number one concern, and I see that the only way that we're going to be able to do that is to have the funds to be able to address that and be able to compete effectively across Virginia.
Ms. Mauer.
Well, I am going to support the 99 cent tax rate, but I do want to manage expectations a little bit in order to fully fund the school budget. They were looking for quite a bit. They threw everything in but the kitchen sink and said, "We're going to give you all of our wants and all of our hopes and all of our dreams, and you figure it out." And that would require a dollar five on the tax rate. So let's manage expectations here, but at least what we can do with the 99 cent tax rate is we can fund the base budget, so we're not going backwards. We can fund for the growth. We can fund for the salary increases. Now what we have to do, and what you have to do, is ensure that that's what the school board actually funds. We are only limited in providing what we say we're going to fund, but the actual, the actual decisions are made across the street. So let me manage those expectations for everybody, and I got a lot of feedback from a lot of my constituents asking for that 99 cent tax rate, and this is very difficult to do because there are still some questions that I have as far as where the numbers really are. But what I can tell you is that we have done a five-year forecast for the first time, and that five-year forecast is grim, and it's not looking good, and so we need to start looking at our revenue sources, and that is why I'm supporting this 99 cent tax rate. It is in order for us to not just fund the teachers, but also fund fire and rescue and the sheriff's deputies, which are woefully behind where we need to be. And so that is, so not all of this money is going over to the schools, and in order to fully fund that budget, you're looking at a dollar five tax rate. So I want to make sure that we're managing these expectations, but what we are doing is we're taking steps towards the goals of ensuring that we're funding the services that are critical to the functioning of this county. And so, so I am supporting the 99 cent tax rate, and I hope, I sincerely hope, that the school board will use that additional money, and we haven't set the budget yet. We're only setting the tax rate, that any additional money that I'm hoping that they will put forth and be true to what they say their priorities are, and that is funding these raises. So, the fight isn't over. We still have to approve a budget, but at least what we are doing is we're providing enough of a cushion to where we can make a few more choices than we could at 96 cents. Thank you.
Mr. Snellings?
I just have a quick question, Mr. County Attorney. If we want to categorize fund the school budget, that'll be handled at the budget meeting next week, is that correct?
That's correct, Supervisor Snellings. It would actually be an appropriation, so that could be handled at the budget time or at the appropriation time.
So we can categorize that instructional, whatever?
Based on the categories that are listed in the state code, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
So a question on that.
Madam Chair, just a clarification on that. Typically, we would need the schools to come back after you make a decision on the local appropriation as to how that money will be categorized for you to then take final action. I'm not sure that we'll be in the position to do that next week. Certainly, if you make that decision on the local appropriation on Tuesday and give us direction on what the total amount is, we can then immediately pursue the categorical breakdown from the schools for the next day's action, but there's some potential that that may be challenging for them to do by the next day. So just want to put that out there. We'll pursue that immediately if that's the direction that you all are going to head in, but of course, we'll have to know what the local appropriation is first.
Ms. Mauer.
Can we then, if, if we don't have the time to understand the categorical funding, can we appropriate, appropriate those funds on a quarterly basis?
The board can appropriate on a quarterly basis, yes.
Okay.
And also, as long as you make a final appropriation in terms of categories, probably by the 15th of May, I think we'll be fine, which would give a little bit more time for us to work with the schools on that category. I don't know if our CFO has any more comment on that, but I just want to at least throw that out there as a word of caution on timing, and then we'll come back next week and, and tell you for sure how we can go forth with that.
Okay. Ms. Shelton.
I have one more question, Mr. Foley. According to the timeline, when would we have to do any additional referendums if we decide to go that route in order to have them meet the November deadline?
So, Madam Chair, the question is about the potential of a bond referendum to finance some school projects or any other projects, and if that were to be added to the ballot in November, if you all should choose to pursue that, we will have to work with the court system, and I believe we have to have that submitted to the courts by July in order for them to then work to put that on the ballot, and I, I don't know if the county attorney has any clarifications, but generally speaking, 81 days before the referendum, so if you work back, and I think that's in that July-August timeframe. So if we were to pursue a, a bond referendum for schools or any other needs, we would have to do some work over the next couple of months to be prepared for how you'd like to proceed with that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Foley. Mr. Cavalier, do you have any comments?
Sure. This is, I think, my 15th budget year, and so I must say that this has been the year that I've received the least amount of opposition from the advertised tax rate ever. I mean, usually we do get a slew of calls and emails and people coming out to say, "Don't go to the maximum advertised rate," which is 99 cents in this case. But like, like my colleagues up here, I, I feel that this is the right thing to do this year. Our, our needs have grown and grown and grown, and it's, 99 cents won't even get us quite to that point that we can fulfill all the needs, but it, it takes a good part of them. I was told by my school board counterpart in my district, Ms. Cater, that if, if we go ahead with this 99 cent rate, she, she's confident that it will fund the COLA proposed for the schools at the 2.5%. And like, like my colleagues, I'm, I'm hopeful that the school board follows through on that because that, that's one thing that I'm, I'm going to be really continuing to push. I think that was right, and, you know, there are some other school districts going higher this year, but, you know, that was the school's request and the superintendent's request, and only they can set the salary structures. So, but I would like to then also make sure we have parity, like we have always tried to do in the past, and do the same increase for the county employees. And while the county administrators have proposed a 2% COLA for the county employees, another half percentage point would, I think, cost about $280-some thousand, according to our budget officer, Andrea. She sent me an email on that today, so tell them, shake your head if I'm wrong. Okay. So I just like, I like there to be parity, and I think that's the only fair way to go. And hopefully, we can make some necessary cuts in other areas that we can achieve all these things because I think we need to put people first, and that's what this budget can do if we execute it properly. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I, sort of, we started with Mr. Dudenheffer on one end of the dais, and we go to me. Certainly, there is a different climate out there than I have seen in the county. As I talk to people from Earls to Giant, from White Oak down to England Run, from Briarwood to Chatham, there is a, almost a chorus of people who say that they are willing to go with a 99 cent tax rate if it is clear that it's going to go to areas such as public safety, police, fire, rescue, education, infrastructure. They want to make sure that it is going to be spent wisely, and I think that, quite honestly, there's, there's a feeling on this body from conversations that I've had that, that is a desire on our part, is to make sure that people realize this is going to be a, a tax rate and revenue that is going to be spent wisely, not just for the sake of doing it. I will ask, and, and the gentleman raised about, concerns about the elderly, and in conversations with our extremely intelligent Commissioner of Revenue, there are different things that we can do to simplify and to modernize the senior program, to make it so that there's, now there are certain triggers that you can kick in. So I would hope that the board here is supportive of having the Commissioner of Revenue look into what steps we could do to modernize it or simplify it, see what the impact would be, and then report that back to the, our Finance and Budget Committee to look into for the future because certainly, this county is diverse, and there are a number of people who are seniors and disabled, who aren't making the salary set, the wise lady pointed out, so that we should be cognizant of their needs as well as the other people. So hopefully, the, the board supports me on that aspect, and I really do believe that there is a commitment on this body that we look at the, the situation that is in existence right now. On a ride along with the Fire Department, the number of people they're losing to other communities because of salaries. In education, we're losing people, the sheriffs having trouble filling slots, and we can't provide basic services if we don't acknowledge the real world that we're living in. And so I think that this is a good step, and I applaud people for coming out, and I also applaud my fellow board members in trying to do due diligence and looking into budgets and looking into things and not making a decision without information, but trying to gather all the information they should. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Does anyone have any other additional comments? Okay.
So I would just like to, I'm not going to echo everything that my colleagues have said, but I would like to commend our county administrator. There are two really important things that we do as supervisors, and every year, we set the tax rate, which is not something that we take lightly, and this is actually the second year through a budget cycle with Tom Foley, our county administrator. We've looked at things this year very differently than we've looked at them in years past. We've had a number of board budget work sessions. In fact, we have another one next Tuesday, and then we have our, maybe could be our final one, we hope, on Wednesday from 2:00 to 4:00. And I'll just tell you, we've, we've looked at things very differently, we've turned over every rock, and raising taxes is not something, as you've heard from everyone else, that we taste, take lightly. We do need to take care of our teachers, our pairs, our service employees, the bus drivers, the, the janitors, as well as all of our public safety employees. We're having a difficult time keeping the people, the employees in the 911 center. I don't know if you've ever been exposed to that center, but it's very, very stressful taking those calls. It's a different level of stress than a teacher that's in charge of 25 kids in a classroom. And we do need to take care of our, our sheriff deputies, and, and some of you may not be aware, but we have what's called a hybrid system for fire and rescue in our county. We have a tremendous, our county survived for many years on all volunteers, but the volunteers, not just in Stafford County, but in the Commonwealth and throughout the nation, those numbers are just continuing to decline. People are very busy with their lives, and they don't have time to volunteer at the local fire station. And so every time we put a new engine in a station 24/7, that's about $1.2 million for the way they run their shifts, and that's very important. If you have a fire at your home, you want somebody there, and the same thing with EMT services. So anyway, I just would like to say that I don't take this lightly, but I strongly believe that it is the right thing for us to do to raise our tax rate and keep it at the 99 cents. So with that, I'll bring it back to the board. We have a motion, and we have a second, and at this point, I'll ask everybody to cast their votes. Tally the vote. There you have it, the motion passes unanimously. And at this point in time, the April 24th special meeting of the Board of Supervisors is adjourned.